Okay, go ahead and proceed. Today is Thursday, March 3rd, 2022, at nine thirty PM. I hereby declare the record as scheduled for March 1st for the City of West Palm Beach zoning board's meeting. So the first slide I have for Secretary is called...
Michael, I'm sorry, Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Christopher Kramer.
Here.
Malika Barlow. Let the record reflect that Malika Barlow is not present. Michael Heyman.
Here.
Michael Wood.
Here.
Alfred Fields.
Here.
Jonathan Burgess. Let the record reflect that Jonathan Burgess is absent as well.
Thank you very much. So we do have a board in person, there are five members, and because there are only a total of five, then Mr. Fields will serve as a full voting member at the debate proceeding. I'd like everyone now to...
Pardon me, Mr. Chair, if you can just make sure the microphone is on and that it's working?
Okay, sorry.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay. Now we'd like to have everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda then is the approval of the minutes from the February meeting. These were included in our board packet, so I'd like at this time for either any corrections, additions, changes to the minutes, or if there are none, then I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Okay, so that was, that motion was moved by Member Wood and seconded by Vice Chair Cameron. We'll just take a voice vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. The minutes are approved. I will now move to a report from the Planning Division staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Don't have anything really to report, no changes to the agenda. The one thing I do want to do is just a brief reminder to the board members to take note of the attendance record that's provided each month within your packet as far as the number of absences. The bylaws do provide that three consecutive absences could, you know, play a role in terms of reappointments and what have you, so just kind of pay attention to that as you continue to serve each month. We greatly appreciate your participation, and regular attendance is important to make sure that the applications that we receive can be processed in a timely manner and so forth. So just kind of a reminder to keep that in, you know, in view as you read through your packet each month and take note for the following months thereafter, so, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rich. I'll then move to remarks by the chairperson. I think the only remarks are just, I'll go over the rules for the proceedings today. Matters before the zoning board of appeals are quasi judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. First, the applicant will make a presentation and answer any questions from the board. Then the applicant will be followed by city staff who will provide a presentation recommendation to the board, and then they will answer any questions. Then members of the public will be given the opportunity to provide comment with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance of today's meeting, such as emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. The applicant at that time will have an opportunity for rebuttal, and then the floor will be closed. This board will go into executive session for discussion, a motion, and then a vote. And the way that our board works is a total of four votes are required for approval. So with that, I will go on to declaration of ex parte communication, and I'll just start off with my left, at my left with Mr. Heyman.
No ex parte communications, thank you.
Okay, continue to my right.
No ex parte communications.
No ex parte communications.
No ex parte communications.
Okay, and this is Board Chair Hagan, I have no ex parte communications either. So with that, we'll go ahead and move into the public hearing and start off with the swearing in of the speakers. I'll turn over to our board attorney for that.
Everyone who testified, please stand, raise your right hand. Do each of you swear or affirm the testimony you give will be truthful.
Okay. Great. We had no continued cases on the agenda, so that'll move us into the cases that are before us this month. We have a total of two. I'll start off with case number one, which is zoning board of appeals, case is number 3379A and 3379B. Turn over to our board secretary then to read those items into the record, please.
A two-part request by Johnny Brinkman of Urban Design Studio on behalf of Children's Place at Home Safe, Inc., for approval of the following. ZBA 3379A, a Class B special use permit to grant a waiver from Section 94-273D112C3 of the city's zoning and land development regulations to allow signage for a Type II community residential home located within a residential district. And ZBA 3379B, variance from Section 94-4073B and 94-4073C of the city's ZLDR specifically regarding the permitted size and number of identification signs for non-residential uses. Location, the approximately 3.7 acre property is located at 513047th Place North, within Commission District Number Four, Commissioner Joseph Pizzi.
Pizzi.
Pizzi?
Yep.
Sorry.
Okay, great, thank you very much. We'll turn it over now, we start off with the applicant making a presentation.
Thank you so much, board members. Lency Jean-Louis with Urban Design Studio. For the record, on behalf of Children's Place at Home Safe, Inc., we are here before you today in regards to the Type II community residential home that Home Safe got approved that's located, as you can see in this area highlighted in yellow, to the southwestern portion of 47th Place and Haverhill Road. And to preface today's request, the Home Safe Type II community residential home actually got approval December 5th, 2019 via ZBA case 3379 to allow the site in its current location, and this was to waive a minimum 1,200-foot distance from one community group home to another. So as such, today's request is in regards to signage and not the appropriateness of the location of the Type II community group home. So our first request here today is a special use permit to have a waiver to allow signs in a residential district and a community residential home Type II. And we are also requesting variances to allow a monument sign and a wall sign on the same lot, a 32-square-foot freestanding monument sign and a 43.5-square-foot wall sign. So to get into more background about Home Safe and its general mission, Home Safe is, provides housing for victims of child abuse and domestic violence, and it currently operates a Type II community residential home, which was previously classified as a group home Type III, with 24 children on the current Haverhill Road campus, and that campus is actually one mile away from the subject site, and this has been in operation for over 15 years. And this campus was actually sold to Morse Life in 2017, which is why Home Safe purchased the subject property at the current site, and Home Safe also has a site in unincorporated Palm Beach County that houses 12 children. So here you see a general base of the location as mentioned previously, southwest of 47th Place North and Haverhill Road. And to get into more of the surrounding uses, you have Egrit Lakes Elementary School to the north with a zoning of RPD and a future land use of single-family. You have the Fox Hall subdivision to the west with a zoning of RPD and a future land use of single-family. And the Mari Dottie Apartments to the east with a zoning of MF14 and a future land use of multifamily. And it's worth noting that the only access off of 47th Place in this picture is for the bus loop for Egrit Lakes Elementary School and the proposed Home Safe site. So both of the residential developments that are neighboring Home Safe actually access further down Haverhill Road south of development, and none of them actually access via 47th Place North, and they're also oriented away from 47th Place North and screened and buffered in between that. So anyone actually driving on 47th Place North, they'll have to either go to the bus loop in Egrit Lakes, or they'll have to go to the proposed Home Safe site. And that road actually dead ends and then further goes on to a city-owned property and wetlands to the west. So typically, with a Type II community group home in a non-residential district, there would be permitted one of each sign, one wall sign, and one monument sign. Now, this is in a residential district, but of course, as mentioned before, it's not necessarily in a residential neighborhood, so this is the subject of our initial variance to allow the monument sign and the wall sign to be permitted on the same site. And as for the monument sign, typically if there were a typical apartment complex in the MF14 district, there would be permitted something sort of as 20, 32 square feet as we're proposing here, but because of the use, the code requirement is 20 square feet, but we are requesting this variance to allow enough space not only for the logo of Home Safe, but the sponsorship that allows the unique use of Home Safe to properly serve its community. And the third variance is for the wall sign. The code requirement is 20 square feet, we're proposing 43.5, and this is really in regards to the proportion and scale of the building. Again, it's not being seen by any other neighboring residents or anyone in the school, it's only being seen by those accessing the site. And if I go back to the site plan here, you can see how long that front facade is, and it's really just being designed to be proportional to that front facade area. And I did go out and take a video just to provide context of the surrounding area and the fact that, again, while this is in a residential zoning district, it's not in a residential neighborhood, and the only travelers who would be accessing this site from 47th Place would be those either accessing the Egrit Lakes bus loop or the Home Safe site. So this is about a minute and a half long video, it's kind of a slow walk, but you can kind of see the general, the general characteristics, and I'll fast forward a little bit just because it... You go down, go west towards Egrit Lake, and you see the bus loop sign here. And then as you go a little further, you see the dead end of the site, and that leads into city-owned property and further wetlands. And you can see some of the construction to the east, or to the south rather, of the current facility that was approved. And then this last shot here is looking east towards 47th Place and Haverhill Road. So you can see that, again, this signage wouldn't have any negative impact on surrounding communities simply because that road is limited, or has limited access for those going to Egrit Lake or Home Safe. So staff has reviewed our request, and as you can see in the staff report, they have deemed that we have complied with all waiver standards and all variance standards and are recommending approval. And that concludes our presentation, we are available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and start off with any questions from the board. I'll start off at the end with Mr. Board Member Fields.
No questions at this time.
Okay, Board Member Wood?
No questions.
Vice Chair Cameron?
No questions.
Okay, Board Member Heyman?
No questions.
Okay, and I have no questions. So we'll move on to the staff presentation then.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, for the record, Eric Schneider, principal planner. I'm not going to give you guys a presentation. Lency covered the information in that, I do just want to point out that, for clarity, that not only does it meet the variance standards, but it also meets the Class B special use permit standards. I'm not sure if he had clearly stated that in there. And the Class B special use would be to allow the signage on the property as a waiver to the group home type, with a community residential Type II in a residential district, and then the way, the variances are to allow the additional sign as well as the sign size above what would normally be allowed as a accessory sign in a non-residential district, or for a non-residential use, excuse me. So staff recommends approval, is in compliance with all the standards. Do you have any questions to staff?
All right. Go with Board Member Wood, any questions for staff?
I know you're recommending approval, but are you including any conditions or special conditions for this approval?
No conditions, it's going to be, if the board chooses or finds it in compliance, then there will be, just, they would go forward for building permit with the sign size as required through the permitting process.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Cameron?
Sure, thank you. Any communications from people who live in the neighborhood with regards to this?
I have not had any communications from any of the neighbors regarding this, the mailers that the applicant sent out, or the notice that was in the paper.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Member Heyman?
I have no questions, other than if there are people here to speak, I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Yep, definitely. And then Board Member Fields, any questions of staff?
No question.
Okay, I have no questions of staff, okay. With that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. So if anyone is here to speak on this item, please go ahead and proceed to the podium. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask staff just to confirm, were any emails, voicemails, or any communication received? Okay, they're indicating none, so I will close the public hearing. That moves us into executive session, so I don't know if, I'll go ahead and start with Vice Chair Cameron, if you have any comments or any discussion on this item?
It seems as they meet all the requirements as the applicant and the staff have pointed out.
Yep, okay. Member Heyman? Okay.
Apologize for my mic being off.
No worries. Member Fields?
No, no further discussion.
Okay, and Board Member Wood?
No further questions.
Okay, well, I don't think I have any discussion either, so I'll go ahead at this time and entertain a motion on this item.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will move that the zoning board of appeals grant ZBA case number 3379A, a request by Johnny Brinkman of Urban Design Studio on behalf of the Children's Place at Home Safe Incorporated for a Class B special use permit to grant a waiver from Section 94-273D112C3 of the city's zoning and land development regulations to allow signage for a Type II community residential home located within a residential district. The motion is based on the testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in Section 94-36E3 and 4 and 5, and the standards in Section 94-273A2 and Section 94-273D112C3 of the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second emotion.
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Wood and seconded by Board Member Fields. We'll have the secretary please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Christopher Kramer?
Yes.
Michael Wood?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Malika Barlow? Let the record reflect, Malika Barlow is not present. Michael Heyman?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess? Let the record reflect that Jonathan Burgess is not present.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously, so we'll move on to, there was a second variance, and we'll entertain a motion for that.
So I will also move that the zoning board of appeals grant ZBA case number 3379B, a request by Johnny Brinkman of Urban Design Studios on behalf of Children's Place at Home Safe Incorporated for variances from Sections 94-4073B and 94-4073C of the city's zoning and land development regulations specifically regarding the permitted sign and number of identification signs for non-residential uses. The motion is based on the testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff's report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The zoning board of appeals hereby makes finding the fact that each of the criteria in Article II, Section 94-38D6 of the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second emotion.
Okay, motion is made by Board Member Woods and seconded by Board Member Fields, so we'll go back to a roll call vote, please.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Michael Wood?
Yes.
Christopher Kramer?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Malika Barlow? Let the record reflect, Malika Barlow is not present. Michael Heyman?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess? Let the record reflect that Jonathan Burgess is not present.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero. Okay, you're all set? We'll go ahead and move on then to the next item on the agenda, and that's zoning board of appeals case number 3397. I ask the board secretary to please read that item into the record.
Zoning board appeals case number 3397, a request by Tomozami Group for a variance from Section 94-72 and Section 94-44C of the city's zoning and land development regulations to allow the construction of three single-family homes within a single-family low-density residential zoning district. Location, approximately 0.606 acre property is located at 204 South Chillingworth Drive, within Commission District Number Four, Commissioner Shalonda Warren.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we'll have the applicant please come forward and give us a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Rod Finer, I'm an attorney with Coker &amp; Finer, for the record, 1404 South Andrews Avenue in Fort Lauderdale. With me today, in case we need to hear from him, is our project engineer Howard Jablon, and we represent the owner and developer, Tomanzini Group. Pleasure to be before you today, and let's see if I can figure out how to make this work to go to the next slide. There we go, so we have before you today, thank you by the way, you know, I'm really not that old, and sometimes it feels like I am. We are here before you for two variances today. One, it's a, this is for a three single-family home development. One deals with a front setback variance, and one deals with a landscape buffer variance from a roadway. We are asking for 20 feet instead of 25 feet for the front setback variance, and code requires a five-foot landscape buffer when you have a roadway from adjacent property, and in this particular case, as you'll see, we're asking for a zero landscape buffer in this particular instance. So with that being said, this is an aerial of the property, so you can see where it is, you can see we're directly adjacent to Congress Avenue, and there's single-family homes all around us except up here where there are some churches and other ones. Access to the site, just so you know, is going to curve via its own entry drive off of South Chillingworth Avenue, and that's significant for a couple of things. One is when we were working with city staff through the site plan, obviously we didn't want city staff to have to maintain a public roadway that served only three single-family homes. So the roadway is going to be private, we're forming a homeowners' association for this, and the roadway will be maintained by the HOA, and as a matter of fact, just so it's clear to everyone who would eventually purchase this, we're putting a notice in both the contract when we sell these lots and in the deed that talks about you're subject to an HOA that's responsible for maintaining the roadway. So this way, what we're trying to avoid, and we worked with staff on this, is we're trying to avoid potential future owners coming before the city and saying, oh wait, you need to pay for this roadway, or pay to maintain the roadway, that was never the intent, it's not the intent, and by not, instead of just burying in a homeowner's declaration, we're actually putting it on the face of the deed, so everyone is going to get notice of that right off the top. What makes this property very unique, and here's a little bit of more detail, the adjacent single-family homes you can see here, I've labeled to the, to the south, this is the owner's property, and adjacent to, adjacent to Congress Avenue, this dark property here, that's owned by FDOT. FDOT originally had that for either expanded right-of-way or some other use next to Congress. So that effectively limits our use of what we could do, on how we could access, because we can't access through Congress in this area, because Congress is an elevated roadway, as I'm sure you're all aware, right in this area. So there's no opportunity to enter and exit off of Congress. So what we did is, you can see here, and I'll highlight right here, this area right here, we've arranged to purchase that property from FDOT. FDOT is selling us that property, we've worked with them, we actually tried to get more property from FDOT, and FDOT said, no, we can't do that because we're reserving the rest and transferring it to Palm Beach County for drainage. So they gave us what we could, so we could have safe and adequate access, so you can see the roadway comes in here off Chillingworth, it'll serve the three single-family home lots in here, and that's why this area narrows here. We've run this through fire, there's a, when I show you the site plan, you'll see there's a turnaround here, so this provides safe and adequate access not only to residents and their guests, but also fire and other public safety access people. What's, what's interesting about this is because of where the access road is. So here's a site plan, you can see the, each individual three lots with a proposed home. By the way, these are going to be spec homes, so they won't be built, we'll wait until we get someone under contract and then they can come in and, you know, we'll give them alternatives on how to build this. But you can see they come in through here through the roadway, and because the roadway is here, that, then this portion of the lot is what code defines as frontage. So even though access is occurring off Chillingworth, this is deemed frontage of the property, which means that's where the front setback is. And so when you look at this, we have 20 feet from where the proposed building would be to the roadway, but if you add the roadway into that, we actually exceed the setback, but we're not allowed to include the roadway in our calculations because it's common area and owned by the HOA. So that's the necessary reason why we're getting the front setback variance, when we actually, there's going to be no building that's even close to us in the front, you know, that's the purpose of a setback, is to ensure there's adequate separation between buildings, especially in the front. Well, here, not only do we meet that with the roadway, but then we're going to have this other drainage parcel right here that's going to be owned by Palm Beach County. And then that leads us directly actually into the second variance, which is the landscape buffer for the roadway. We would have loved to have put a landscape buffer in, let me say that. To do that, we would have had to shrink the roadway, which would have meant that's a threat to public health, safety, and welfare, because then fire trucks couldn't get access to the site nor could it provide for safe ingress and egress, and FDOT would not give us any additional property even for, even for landscaping, if we covered into, to put that for landscaping, they said, no, that's for Palm Beach County, we've done everything we can for you in this particular case, and we're buying it for them that way. So that's where it is. The lots themselves, however, will have all code-required landscaping. So the lots themselves are not going to be below landscape requirements, this is just for a landscape buffer by the roadway, and the purpose of that is so, under code, so you don't see an internal access roadway or a roadway from the right-of-way, which I would suggest to you that this meets that requirement, because A, we have that FDOT buffer there, and B, Chillingworth is, not Chillingworth, Congress is elevated in that area anyway, so it's not even, anyone's looking down onto the property anyway. Just so you're aware, it's not part of the variance, but I thought you would like to know, we tried to make this as compatible with the adjacent single-family homes as we could. These lots all meet the lot size requirements, they're over 6,000 square feet lots, and that's it. And by the way, we've read your staff report, your staff report, your staff did an excellent job analyzing it, they're recommending approval, you have my backup as well, and either Mr. Jablon or I are here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll start off with questions from the board, I'll start with Vice Chair Cameron, any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
Okay, Board Member Heyman?
Thank you. Can we flip back to the site plan?
Yes, sir.
If I understand correctly, you have a homeowners' association comprised of three homes, three members, is that correct?
Three homes, three members, yes, sir.
And the, and the homeowners' association, the only thing that they've, they're overseeing is the road itself?
Actually, this drainage area right here too, so, you know, the drainage all works together as one, so if the...
Sorry, pointing out a... Sorry, point that out again if you would please. Where? Your last statement?
I'm sorry, on drainage as well, because this area is a drainage, drive-detention area with some drainage also requirements. So the site functions as a whole for drainage purposes. So the HOA will also be responsible for maintaining the drainage.
It is creative, I'll say that. Okay, thank you.
We'll go to Board Member Fields. Any questions to the applicant?
I have questions down that same line, as far as the association's responsibility for maintenance on the site. I'm very familiar with the site. And are you saying that it's going to be turned back over to the county? So the county would be responsible for everything west of the roadway that's put in for the...
That is correct. So this area right here, sir, is being transferred to Palm Beach County for drainage purposes from Congress or whatever FDOT decided they needed for drainage purposes. That's Palm Beach County's responsibility. This roadway and the one little drainage on our, this site's drainage, not off our property, but our onsite property, the HOA will also be responsible for. And by the way, this was the solution that we worked with, just so we're aware, that we worked with staff on. You know, originally, we were just going to have this be part of the individual lots and have each owner be being responsible for maintaining the roadway on their individual lots with cross-access easements and something else like that. And the city surveyor in particular had requested that, actually, they weren't comfortable with that, and they wanted this to be owned by an HOA, so that there was an association that was responsible and not, one homeowner wasn't relying upon another homeowner or something like that. And we said, we can do that. That's fine. And we acknowledged what staff requested and accommodated that.
Okay, because that was my next question. I think you kind of cleared it, but I want to make sure. So the association would be totally responsible for all the maintenance? It would fall on individual owners of those...
That is correct, but remember, in all honesty and fairness, the HOA is funded by the individual owners. So yes, the HOA organization is responsible. Though, I would imagine, the HOA, what we've done when we've set up the preliminary budget for the HOA, as part of the monthly assessment, we've put a yearly maintenance fee in there. And even if yearly maintenance isn't required, at least when the developer owns this and before it's turned over, there'll be a cash reserve for maintenance to hopefully avoid any special assessment, should that be required in the future.
Thank you. No further questions for me.
Okay. We'll go to Board Member Wood.
So I understand the drainage that you're referring to is stormwater drainage. Are there utilities located in the road that the homeowners will own?
I'm going to bring up our project engineer, Howard Jablon, to answer that. And Howard, just if you would, please confirm that you've been sworn in and everything when you get up here to speak.
Yes, Howard Jablon, AJ Hydro Engineering, Inc., and I have been sworn in. I'm the project engineer for the job. I also prepared the site plan. And yes, there are utilities that are going to be crossing these lots. There's, there will be easements for those utilities. They will be individual to, they will be serving individual lots. No utility will be serving multiple lots. So there'll be a water meter at the property line. That water meter, there'll be several water meters at the property line, and then a water service to serve each individual lot. So each homeowner will be responsible for their particular water service. Same for these sewer laterals. And now, when it comes to other utilities like FPL Power, that will have to work with the utility provider on that.
So from what I am hearing, you're saying is the homeowner is responsible for, and I'm mostly concerned about the sanitary sewer more than I am FPNL and Comcast Cable. So the homeowner is responsible for the sanitary sewer from their property to the road that is owned by the homeowners' association? And then that ties into a sanitary sewer line that's located in the road that's owned by the homeowners' association? I'm assuming that's all gravity-fed? And then it goes to a force main on Congress or on Chillingworth?
Well, on Chillingworth, there is a gravity sewer main on Chillingworth. From that main, we're going to cut a lateral, unless already one's existing, but I think we're cutting a lateral into the main and then placing a cleanout at the property line.
Will it require a lift station?
No. No, this project will not require a lift station. There'll be, there's a lift station downstream from the existing gravity sewer that's located in Chillingworth. So there's no private lift station grinder situation for this particular project. Thankfully, there's an existing gravity sewer, and it's a very minor amount of effluent that's going to be added to the system.
It is, but the maintenance of the sanitary sewer line that eventually feeds into a city sanitary sewer line that goes into Congress is the responsibility of the association. It has to be funded by the association for its maintenance, regular maintenance, as well as any emergency maintenance that's required. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And there's, so the way your homeowners' association is set up, there's no provision to dedicate this road to the City of West Palm Beach? It's always going to remain a private road. Is that correct?
That is correct at the request of staff.
That's request of staff?
Yes. They didn't, they didn't want this, they wanted it that way. They didn't want the city being responsible for maintenance for three homes or something else. And I just wanted to add one additional portion to that because this area that was owned by FDOT was originally taken from when these plats were lotted or platted, that reduced our width, which is really what's causing the variance, reduced our lot width to 66 feet total lot width, which is extraordinarily small when you look at what the setbacks would be and everything else.
I totally see that. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I started with you, right? Okay. I don't think I have any questions for the applicant either. Go back to...
One last question, if I could. Do you know if there's a minimum number of members required for an HOA?
As far as I'm aware, sir, there is not. It's just you form it with a declaration, and that's what you do. There is not a certain minimum number. And if I could just take it to the next level in answering one of Mr. Wood's questions. If the board wants us to put something else in the deeds, all that language will be in the Declaration of Covenants for the HOA. But if you wanted something besides the roadway maintenance, but sewer maintenance being put in the deeds, so everyone's clearly on notice that when they're looking about that and will come up during title, we're more than happy to do that, too. We're not trying to surprise any future owners here.
I don't think you're going to try to surprise anyone. I just want to make sure that the homeowners understand that they're responsible for a sanitary sewer line that involves more than their own home, which is unusual when you just buy a single-family home.
So what we'll do is, we're already doing that with the roadway. We'll put an annotation on the deed that says that. We'll agree to that type of condition. The reason why that's so important is, you know, I also do closings and title work. And so when you get a title work, it says, oh, your title's subject to this declaration of, for homeowners' associations. And nobody reads the declaration for homeowners' association, unless they're a lawyer or a realtor. And then they don't know what, then all of a sudden, they get caught by surprise on this. But everybody, including title agents, read the deed. So the deed will then, what we put in the deed will then transfer subsequently on all other deeds. And so that way, we don't run into that problem.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Heyman, I sort of hijacked you.
You can finish and I have a...
But to take it one step further. Typically, in an easement, the lines that are running there belong to the utility that put them there.
If the city wants us to convey the sewer lines to them, we will. We were told for this development right now. They did not. But if they change their mind during permitting or whatever else, we'll be happy to do that. We, that's not one, that's, we don't care one way or the other, let me say that. So that'll be up to the city utilities department. Originally, when we submitted the site plan originally and went through original review, utilities want, city utilities wanted it set up this way. But we can change it, no problem.
I can imagine why, yeah. I mean...
Well, I'm sure you don't, I'm sure you don't want to, I'm sure the city doesn't want to change that. So there will be individual cleanouts for each individual home that feed into the gravity line?
Yes. If you look along, let's see if I can do this along the... There's an existing gravity sewer in the center of Chillingworth. There's going to be a lateral that's going to come straight across here. There'll be a cleanout at the property line. Then, as you continue to the northeast, I think it is, there'll be a cleanout in the roadway here with a lateral that goes to this unit. The line will continue. There'll be a cleanout over here with a lateral to this unit. And then coming over here, and then finally, a lateral here. So there'll be cleanouts along the way. The HOA will be responsible for maintaining all that line up to the property line. At the property line, that's the point where the utility will come in, and they will take over, and they'll maintain from the property line inside Chillingworth, which is a public road, public utility there, going out. But everything that's on the northwest, northeast side of Chillingworth will be within gravity sewer lines, like a manifold, with a cleanout at each unit.
Okay, that's all I have for the applicant.
Okay.
I'll just summarize with this, Master Chair. Again, I recognize that this is sort of a little bit of a unique situation. And I do recognize that, but due to FDOT taking the right-of-way that was up in here originally, it's sort of, this is the solution, especially even though we went back to FDOT and purchased property from them to make access work. And we're paying market rate for that property, just so everyone's aware.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and turn it over to staff for a staff presentation.
We're recording Angela Van... Pennington's owner administrator. I'm not going to rehash all the... Everything that's gone through, and actually, my presentation is quite short. And I just wanted to, from a standpoint of staff's position, understanding why staff, because this property has been vacant, as the staff report says, since we gave, turned it to Purini Way back in '64, and it was platted. And then the property was given to, a portion was given to the county, state at the time, for Congress Avenue. We've had numerous, numerous people over the years who tried to come in, tried to figure out a way to develop originally five lots, because this originally was platted as five lots as part of the original plat. And until this time, nothing really staff could support, because it was just trying to get the lot size, the smaller lots, townhome developments. And the applicant, since 2017, he's owned it, and we've been going around and around with him for about two, two and a half years, trying to come up with a solution that staff and we could support and that would work. And this is what, in the end, we end up coming up with, that we, is it perfect? No, but we thought was the best solution to get three homes out and built on this parcel that's basically been vacant forever. And what staff wanted to do, and I'm going to skip this, because I'm going to go to Google, because only one of my videos came through. I'm not sure about that. But let me show you on Google, just to show you, basically, it's just a property today. I'm standing on Chillingworth, looking north at the property. This is the property here. This is approximately where the line, property line goes today. As you can see right here, the property has remained vacant. And it stayed, I'm not sure about the trees or whether some of the neighbors. As you go down to the east, you got a whole line of homes that were back up to it here. So I'm not quite sure about neighbors and what's been on the property and what's been done with that. So as you can see, that's the property here. The entranceway that the applicant was talking about is approximately, because FP9 line is still right here. So to come in approximately right here and then curve around and go this way and take out the 15 feet here along the property from DOT. And then this property here will be landscaped. This is the roadway coming around here, so this portion of the right-of-way will be landscaped as opposed to that. And then the rest of this property here, as you can see, belongs to, will be given to the county and probably be looked like that until the county comes in and does something with the drainage from Congress Avenue. As you can see here, and I'm standing on Congress and Chillingworth, looking this way. As you can see, as the road goes up, that's where the homes will be back in here. And this will remain in its current state. I don't know how far back the guys are coming in, the 15 feet would have taken out some of these trees. Not quite sure yet how that, we haven't gotten a detailed site plan to see how that would work. So again, is this perfect based on staff? No, but I think after the years we've worked with them, this has been the best solution. They came in, they reduced the number of homes to three. Purchased property, that's why. And in answer to staff, and utilities did not want that, because it's a private road. The city does not maintain, the city does not go onto a private road and do any maintenance, that's all. But we wanted to ensure that is put in the deed, so anybody purchasing this property knows you're responsible for the road, you're responsible for the drainage, you're responsible for all of this. So everybody knows what they're responsible for. And staff feels, given the areas around, won't be, could be workforce housing in this area, because there's not going to be some of the housing that we've seen when you're in the south part of the city along Flagler and that area. So this could be some type of workforce housing. So based on that part of it, go back to my other presentation. Staff recommends approval of case number 3397. And the fact that the application complies with the variance standards in Section 9438D6 of the zoning and land development regulations. I'd be happy to answer the questions you have at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with Board Member Heyman.
Thank you. Angela, do you know of any other private communities, HOAs in particular, in the city where the community owns the sewer lines?
Well, basically, you know, most of everything...
Not basically, yes or no?
Out west, out west, all of our developments, those are private roads. We have lift stations in there. That the city goes in, and the city goes in and maintains the lift stations.
And how about the main lines?
I'm not quite sure about that.
Because you haven't needed to probably go in there yet to fix that?
Yeah, so I'm not quite sure about that, to know for sure. The newer developments that are coming in that are private, we are made, the city is requiring them to do this because of that fact.
To do what? To own the...
I don't know, Banyan Cave. I'll let John tell you about Banyan Cave, the latest one.
Okay.
Yeah. For the record, John Roach, Principal Planner for the city. Banyan Cave, as Angela's indicated, is a prime example, where it's a large private development that consists of multiple single-family homes, the commercial, the golf course, and so forth and so on. Everything within that private development boundary is private utilities. Even lift stations within there that serve only their development, those are all private. It's not until they get outside of their individual development and the utilities start serving the broader population that they become public utilities. So there are many instances where private utilities are owned and maintained by the developer.
I'm just concerned about the number of people supporting this and, you know, the burden it's going to put on them if there's got to be something happening. I mean, to divide it amongst three, three homes of workforce housing type. You know, it's a concern to me for those people. And we don't know who they are, obviously, at this point. I mean...
And staff doesn't disagree. It's why we wanted to, it was our concern, too. All we can do is put it in the deed so that they can actually see it. In reality, when you put in a new sewer line, I mean, in reality, when, you know, stuff happens, I'm not going to say that it doesn't, but in reality, what is it, 10, 15 years? We have to go in and do certain things of maintenance to it. But again, ultimately, staff felt that putting it in there, so the buyer knows. You know, that's all we can do to control what the buyer knows when they're going in. And that's why the condition's been put part of the deed. But again, the variance, it's focused back to the variance. What the variance request is before you today is for the lot, front lot setback. And if you, based on the facts, and it's for the landscaping for the right-of-way screening.
Understand, but we're dealing with the opportunity perhaps of talking about conditions and things like that, so I think the whole, the whole palette is open for discussion besides the variance, just to make sure, because, I mean, and I have to tell you, from a disclosure standpoint, we have, in my company, eight hundred and seventy-five associations throughout the state of Florida, it's our business, and I, I know what the population, the three people here are going to be saddled with when they, when they get there, of the responsibility they've got, and the collections and everything else. You know, I've seen, I've seen solutions to that through, through a creation of a CDD, which is more of a, you know, it's a step above certainly, you know, an HOA, which is the most modest of, of all of the types of associations, the fewest teeth, you know, it's, it's just a, and I understand why it's there, but it just, it concerns me, and I don't know if we're, you know, that we can necessarily do anything about that, but those are my concerns, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead to Board Member Fields.
I think Board Member Hyman has clearly announced my position as well, I'm very concerned about that, and I know we're not here to address that, but if we're, the city recognizes that this is going to be workforce housing, it seems like they're-
I'm saying that, I'm saying, given the, given the housing that we've seen along South Flag and given the area, but I'm just saying, no guarantee to be workforce per se, could be market rate, given the market in this area.
It very well could be, but knowing the area as well, very well, and driving those streets quite often, and having friends in those areas, I know the area. But anyway, I know we're not here to address that, so, but that is a major concern, and I would, I would love for the city to take a look at that, because second-generation homeowner or third homeowner, that's going to get lost somewhere, and somebody's going to get saddled with that, and if that neighborhood is consistent with what it is, the expectation is that the city will be responsible for those sewers, because it will be lost on the grandchild that inherits that house in forty years, fifty years, so with that being said, I have no questions.
Board Member Wood?
So I have two questions or comments, so regarding the risk, let's say, involved in that, I would ask staff to confirm for me, the risk becomes less because there's no lift station. Usually, I'm intimately familiar with projects that have contained utility usage within their site and have to connect to a city or county-owned utility, and a lot, when those projects get large, then the connection has to be done through a lift station, and in my experience, most of those problems occur at the lift station site, not so much at the individual homeowner site. That's why I asked if there were cleanouts available for each homeowner to use. So while there's always the concern that a special assessment would have to be applied to the homeowners because of something that happened to the, a collapse or something in the pipe, and I don't even know what the size of the pipe is that's scheduled to go there, but, but it's, I guess, the least amount of risk because there's no lift station that has to be attached to a force main, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and one point I didn't bring, ultimately, the city commission has to approve this subdivision because of the three lots how they're creating it, so ultimately, the city commission will see this in the end as a major subdivision, so they may bring up the same comments, I don't know, but just let you know, ultimately, the city commission has to approve the subdivision.
Okay, and I just have one other question, it may be not relevant, but the property is considered east of I-95, correct? And I'm, I'm very familiar with this road, Chillingworth Road, and I know it's used as a cut-through on a constant basis, which is what prompted the city to install the calming circles along the, along the way. So, does concurrency apply here, or is it waived because it's residential?
Residential, because three single-family homes, they have to do school concurrency, but I don't think they have to do concurrent, I mean, traffic, because it's east of ninety-five, so no. We're talking three homes, we, our traffic engineer did look at the subdivision and all, and didn't have a comment, because you're talking three homes. We understand the traffic circle, the calming that's on Chillingworth because of cut-through traffic, but again, you're talking the minute level with just three homes in there.
Right, thank you.
And just to clarify there, it is just west, I think it would be considered just-
I'm sitting here looking and trying to, trying to see how ninety-five goes across and over, so I don't know if it's east or west.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify for the record, I think it would be considered west of ninety-five, however, I think that-
No, I think the-
Joan Vance's comments about, you know, being the minimus still apply.
Right, west of ninety-five, usually the waiver of the concurrency is east of I-95.
So, I mean, they have to comply with, if the county requires that, and then they have to comply with, again, but it's only a single-family home, I don't see the county having any objection to that.
Okay, is that it? Okay, now I'll go to Vice Chair Camer.
No further questions.
I had a question, and this actually may be better directed to the applicant's engineer, I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I'll go ahead and ask it, but, and this relates to the setbacks, but, or ties back into the setbacks, but was just with the land or property coming back from FDOT, what is the resulting right-of-way width there on Congress Avenue, if we know that? Once that, once you're, once you've acquired the property back from-
I think the right, the ultimate right-of-way of what FDOT is requiring stays the same, I don't know what the number is, though. This is, this is basically the equivalent, before we could get the property from FDOT, we had to go through an FDOT process where they agreed with us that this was deemed surplus property.
Right, right, yeah, it goes through the surplus, yeah, process there, and, yeah, and I was just trying to tell what, you know, and I know that it looks, because it's sort of an irregularly shaped parcel, just what the closest distance either is from the center line of the right-of-way or to the other edge of the, the right-of-way.
It looks like, according to the survey, it's thirty-five feet between what they're giving the applicant, if I'm reading this correctly, and the bridge that goes up over Congress Avenue. It looks like that's what's left, and then from there is forty feet to the center line of Congress.
Forty feet from the edge of this property being-
Well, no, from the, from thirty-five feet is what's left over from the drainage, and then from that point where the sidewalk, the wall is, is forty feet to the center line.
Okay.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, yeah.
Perfect, okay. Okay, no further questions.
Could I add one or two things, Mr. Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
The bare minimum, and I promise-
And I don't know if you, and I don't know if you want to wait till after a public-
I can wait till-
Public comment and then do it all at the end?
That's fine, sir.
Okay, yeah, so we'll go ahead and open the floor to public comment, so I'm going to now call anyone here in the chambers who's here to comment on this, to please come forward. Seeing none, I'll ask staff if there were any emails, voicemails, or other communication received from the public that we need to go into the record.
Yes, I did get a phone call from a residence who, Ms. Jenkins, who lives on North Robbins, is basically kind of west, west of this property, or east, maybe, I think, west of this property, and she basically, her more concern was talking about that the homeowners realize that as the bridge goes up over I-95 and the vibration is created, and the issues that she's having with her home, but, you know, there's really nothing content about what the proposed application is about.
Understood, thank you for sharing that. Okay, if that's it, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and allow the applicant a time for closing remarks before we go into executive session.
Thank you, I think we've vetted this very thoroughly, but, and even though not relevant to the variances, I did want to address one question, the, the private sewer line that's being put in in the roadway will meet all city standards, so if, if the city requires a certain set with pipe or whatever else, that's what we're dealing, we're going to treat it just like it's a public utility, even though it's privately owned, and what's constructed, how it's constructed, and what's installed. And I, again, I'd like to reiterate with what staff said, basically, this property has been vacant for god knows how many years, and this is really the only way that you can get viable access to the property and have sort of a viable development, because otherwise, the property is just not developable, or the city is undertaking additional burdens. And, and while we understand the concern about future homeowners, I will say that, you know, I know the developer is going to be required to pad the HOA account, and then once it's turned over, and of course, this is always subject to the HOA members, and I understand that, but, you know, they will hopefully continue to do that, because they will be used to what the amount of the assessment is, and therefore, they can continue to work on that, so there is a valid reserve in the assessment, or in the, in the HOA coffers.
Okay, yeah, thank you for those clarifications. At this point, we'll go ahead and move into executive session, so we'll go through discussion and comment before going to a motion, and I'll start with Board Member Fields then.
No further discussion on it.
Okay, and Board Member Wood?
I just want to say that I recognize staff's reasoning here, it's a very difficult site to develop, and it is, looks to me like one of the only ways you're going to improve an otherwise blighted piece of land that would never, never really get developed, so I'm inclined to support that as well.
Okay, Vice Chair Camer?
I think the issues that were raised by the various board members with regards to the sewers are very apropos and are of concern. I know that only before us, though, today are the variances with regards to the setback and the landscape of her, so I don't have any objections to those based on what's been presented, but I think that it's probably something for the city commission, and I'm assuming that there was a permitting process in which the sewer issues that were raised were addressed or will be addressed.
Okay, thanks. Go over to Board Member Hyman.
Thank you, nothing further, I think we've vetted this as best we can, and we understand the scenario, understand the complications with it and the things to be concerned about, so I appreciate everybody's input, thanks.
Yes, I agree, I think, not to belabor the point, that given, you know, we are often at this board faced with situations where there are unique conditions that are not imposed by the applicant themselves, and I think this is definitely with, when you've got a overpass over the interstate and a taking that happened decades ago of thirty-five feet, which is pretty substantial from the property, that makes, renders a typical development that would comply with all standards pretty difficult to achieve here, and I think, you know, they've come up with ways that minimize the amount of variance they're coming forward to us with today, so it's a creative solution, not, not perfect, but, but if it's sat undeveloped for this many decades too, it takes something to, to make something actually happen there. So, with that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant ZBA case number three-three-nine-seven, a request by Tomenzini Group for variance from section nine-four dash seven-two A two A and section nine-four dash four-four-three C of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulation for construction of three single-family residents with a front setback of twenty feet, where code requires a setback of twenty-five feet for a residential lot and providing a zero-foot landscape buffer adjacent to the vehicular use areas where code requires a five-feet, five-feet. The motion is based upon testimony presented along with the applicant's submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding the fact that each, the criteria in Article two, section nine-four dash three-eight D six of the City of West Palm Beach and zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Okay, we've got a motion, is there a second?
Second to motion.
Okay, the motion was made by Board Member Wood and seconded by Board Member Fields, we'll have the secretary please call the roll.
Alfred Fields.
Yes.
Michael Wood.
Yes.
Christopher Kramer.
Yes.
Christopher Hegan.
Yes.
Malika Barlow. Please let the record reflect that Malika Barlow is not present. Michael Hayman.
Yes.
Jonathan Burge, Jonathan Burgess. Let the record reflect that Jonathan Burgess is not present.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero, best of luck.
We do appreciate all your input, it was very insightful as well, we're looking at it in the future, so we're having a word with staff.
Great, best of luck.
Thanks, Angel.
Okay, that moves us to administrative appeals, of which there are none or unfinished business, I believe there's also none, new business, not aware of any, so we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.